Good afternoon. The time being 12:09. I will call to order the December 7, 2023 work session of the MARTA Board of Directors. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November 9, 2023 work session. May I have a motion to approve those minutes? It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? And the minutes are adopted. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda for the chair's report is a report of the nominating committee for officers for the 2024 calendar year. The formal vote will be taken in the full board meeting, but I wanted you guys to know the slate during the work session so that if anybody has any disagreements or other candidates, we can open the floor up during the official board meeting. But during the work session, I wanted you guys to know. So, Mr. Duratt, would you please give a report of the nominating committee?
Sure. The members of the nominating committee, including myself, were Frida, Valencia, and Jacob. And we met a few weeks. We're going to be coming to the board with a recommendation of slate of officers. That will be for Katie Powers to be the chair, for Jennifer Ide to be the vice chair, the secretary would be Al Pond, and treasurer would be Rod Frierson. That way, we've got all four jurisdictions represented, and that will be what we will be recommending in the board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Duratt.
Oh, and you will become immediate past chair.
Thank you, Mr. Duratt. And if there's any discussion on those recommendations, that will be open to everyone at the board meeting. The only other items I have on the chair's report, first and foremost, I'd like to express extreme gratitude to the team out at Statler in Salt Lake City. Many of us were able to go see our new train cars. Many of the MARTA staff and many of the board members, I think it was very informative. It certainly is reassuring to see the professionalism and the efficiency of that factory, the cleanliness of it, the organization of it. And I think we made the right decision for the vendor, and it's really exciting to see. They kept joking with us during the tour that they were our babies, and we were almost like at a nursery seeing our babies. And by the end of it, it really kind of felt that way. So, it's very exciting stuff for the authority and for the jurisdictions we serve. And then, the last item I have to say on the chair's report, apologies in advance, but everybody buckle your seat belts. This is going to be a long day. We have to add PCP to the board agenda, so there will be many resolutions coming forward. That's because we didn't have quorum during committee workday, and I think that it's important to note that I know we are all very busy, and I know we all serve on this board in a volunteer capacity. I think Peter has some ideas to work with the new chairman next year on how to craft committee membership so that we don't run into quorum problems, but I think it underscores the importance of the work that goes on in committees and try to make every effort to attend that. And with that, that's all I have for the chair's report. So, the next item on the agenda, I will turn it over to Mr. Greenwood for the GM and CEI report.
Thank you, Chair Worthy. Just wanted to follow up, really, Chairman Worthy's comments just a moment ago were really encapsulating what we're about to talk about, but this is really just to give the room an idea of what happened on Tuesday, December 5. It was a long day, but it did go fast. Six MARTA board members joined senior staff in Salt Lake City, Utah, and we really had a good chance to go over the contractual quantity 400, CQ 400 railcar program. We really took this as an opportunity to move the project from concept and conversation to proof and production. The next slide, please, really gives you the sense of Chair Worthy was talking about the cleanliness and the efficiency, and we were really impressed with what we saw at that facility. They took the opportunity to recap the task for us right from inception, talked about the challenges inherent in moving from a 1.0 design to a 2.0 design.
You really got the most flattering picture of me.
Oh, there's more to come. More to come. And they really gave us a full understanding of the facility and its capacity to deliver on the technology, the design, and the engineering required for a bold new state-of-the-art metro passenger train, the first of its kind in the USA. So, the production teams were really fully engaged with us. They were happy to stop and talk to us about what they were doing, everything from trucks to brakes to bellows and suspension, wiring and harness teams and doors. So, we really got the firsthand knowledge from the team that was talking to us there. It's an intentional strategic transfer of experience and expertise from Switzerland over to the USA, so we got to see, I guess, the maturation of the teams happening here in Salt Lake City. Next slide, please. So, there was a lot of attention to details. If we can get the next slide up on the screen, and we really, it was a real demonstration of their consideration for the customers, for operating personnel, for maintenance personnel. There was lots of thought put into ergonomics and aesthetics and information systems. Next slide, please. And of course...
Are you driving that car?
And...
Let the record reflect, we're actually driving those, but those belong to the city of Dallas in DARTs.
Dallas, not ours.
Yeah.
But the idea here...
They wouldn't let us touch ours.
The idea here behind ride quality is it gives us an idea of what they build, right? And how smooth the ride is, how confident and stable. It was a real quality experience, except, of course, there were some board members that just had a real penchant for speed and weren't as smooth of the operating... I'm not naming any names, but...
They wouldn't let me go over 10 miles an hour.
So, the final slide, the next slide, is really, you know, it was a quality product, meticulous build, bold new design, with delivery as scheduled in 2024, so it was overall a very good experience, Chair Worthy. The next thing I really wanted to talk about in my report is just our upcoming, or before that, if you haven't had a chance to go downstairs and see the bazaar that's going on, the holiday bazaar, it's a real demonstration of the folks that work here at MARTA and what they do when they're not working at MARTA, and they've been able to bring some baked items and some crafts and some skills to the marketplace, if you will. So, it's on for another few hours, so if you get the chance between this and the board meeting, please, by all means, go down and check them out. And then, finally, upcoming events and meetings of significance. We have the Riders Advisory Council happening in the atrium on Wednesday, January 3, and we have the MAC committee meeting, which will be virtual, on Tuesday, January 9. And with that, Chair Worthy, I will turn it to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greenwood. Any questions from colleagues of the GM and CEI? Okay. If not, yes.
I feel like I need to say a couple things about the trip. It was really...
Will you turn your mic on?
No. No. It was really an interesting trip, and I had a chance years ago on a link trip to go to the Boeing plant, and we toured the Boeing plant out in Seattle, and it was interesting there. And this plant, while they're making railroad cars, is not unsimilar to that at all. It's very clean, and the culture that Statler people have for their business is really incredible. And one of the things that I wanted to get to that we saw is they have a plant, they had a plant in Minns, they still have a plant in the Minns, Belarus, and they closed it. I hadn't closed it completely, but they shut down, 1,900 employees there, and they shut it down because of the war in Ukraine. And they took about 200 or 300 of those employees at this plant, and you can see and feel, one of them ran the paint section where they're painting the cars, and you can see the pleasure they have in being here in this country. That's one thing, knowing what's going on at their home, but also the joy they have of working for somebody like Statler. To those of you in this organization that selected that company to build our railroad cars, made an excellent decision. We just voted in this room to do that. We didn't have much to do with picking them, but those folks that did that did an excellent job in picking that company to build those cars, because the cars that we will see here in Atlanta next year, some of them are going to be great, excellent railroad cars that everybody's going to enjoy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Floyd. Any other comments or questions of Mr. Greenwood? Okay. Before I ask for this motion, have all of you had the chance to eat? I know that's a weird question, but if we need to, we can do executive session in the board lounge, but if everybody's eaten, we might as well stay here. Everybody eating? Okay. All right. If that's the case, we'll stay here. We have a real estate matter, a litigation matter, and a personnel matter for executive session, so with that in mind, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. So, moved by Duratt, seconded by Heartage. This will be a hand vote. All in favor of going into executive session, please raise your hand. Okay. We are in executive session. Will all unauthorized personnel please depart the room?
The December 7th Board of Directors meeting for the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority to order. The first item on the agenda is public comments. Mr. Andrews, do we have any public comments by email or voicemail?
Yes, sir. We have one email from a Chappelle Wombo that was received this morning at 11:47 a.m. That will be copied verbatim into the meeting minutes and shared with all of you for your review.
Okay, moving on to in-person public comments. I will remind public commenters that you are limited to two minutes. And we will go in order in which we have received them. So first, a public comment is Mr. Derek Blassingame. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Derek Blassingame, the government watchdog. I appreciate the opportunity to address this board today. I've just finished a 150-day suspension because of riot with respect. And I'm here to talk to you all about this program and offer you all some feedback about how this program needs to be implemented, instituted, and enforced. As a result of your police department's efforts to deny me access to public transportation to be able to participate in this body's meetings, I was thrown in jail on June 16th. They charged me with making a false report. They charged me with false reporting of a crime simply for reporting an incident that involved one of your buses striking me, in my opinion, striking me at the time that it happened and reporting that to your officers. MARTA is not a private entity. Your authority comes from the Georgia General Assembly, the MARTA Act. Citizens have a right to free speech on MARTA. We have a right to use MARTA to come to these board meetings. Riot with respect shall not be a punitive program to deter, discourage, or deprive citizens from exercising their First Amendment rights or for this body to retaliate against persons you deem as a threat to your operations. Riot with respect needs a designated office that exists to collect fees, fines, and where rioters can pay fines without hurdles or hassles. Riot with respect should be fully staffed and equipped with necessary staff and equipment. The right to travel is part of the liberty of which the citizens cannot be deprived without due process of law under the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution. If that liberty is to be regulated, it must be pursuant to the law. If that liberty is to be regulated, it must be pursuant to the lawmaking functions of Congress. If this body continues to threaten, harass, or use your police department to file false charges against me, I'm going to federal court and we're going to pursue violations of the American Disability Act, violations of my Fourth Amendment, violations of my Fifth Amendment, violations of my First Amendment, a conspiracy to violate my civil rights under the 1964 Civil Rights Act. You need to stop it. Riot with respect needs to be improved.
Thank you. Next, public commenter is David Hassel. Hassel, forgive me, sir.
As I said, I've got three things to comment on. Two, I'm involved MARTA mobility and the situation with drivers being stuck waiting on dispatch to respond to them. With the tablet situation on most of the, in the last two weeks, 40% of the buses I've had have not had an operable tablet for dispatch. When they call dispatch, the response is standby. In the least amount of time, we stood by was 15 minutes without moving. I've waited over 45 minutes without moving for a no-show to be verified before we could go on. This is causing the majority of pickups to be late and is easily fixed by just the contractors replacing the equipment properly and maintaining it properly. Now, the driver's saying the dispatchers have three separate functions, only one of which is just talking to the drivers. And when you put every driver out there on standby, you freeze the entire mobility system and nobody can move. I don't know if you all know this or not, but you need to know it and it needs to be fixed. ... ability and ambulances for years. We used pen and paper when the system went down. Saturday night, Sunday morning, when the computers went down, they couldn't pick anybody The other thing I discussed with your gentleman here with bus operations is the movement of the Red Wing Circle and Covington Highway bus stop back to its original location at the exit gate to the retreat at Madison Way Apartments. There is no sidewalk access to the bus stop there. He got, the pictures are in your email. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hassel. Last, is it Roderick Jeffrey?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jeffrey.
Good afternoon. First of all, good afternoon, all of you all and everybody with comments. I'm gonna make this short and sweet. I got a couple of things about the bus service. First of all, those, I don't know what the jargon or the lingo, I call them pay boxes, where you tap your card. Too far outdated. I got on the bus the other day, I'm like, oh, okay, this is pretty sweet. They got the little pole, the yellow pole where you can like tap your phone. Brand new. I've been riding MARTA about 15 years. So why is it that those pay boxes haven't been changed out? I've seen, I went through the transition where MARTA came out with new buses, already equipped with cameras. The old buses got updated to the cameras. So, I mean, I know this stuff costs money, it's a budget, but those pay boxes gotta go. I mean, anytime you tap your card, you can't tell how many trips you got, like, because they don't illuminate. I got on the bus today, I'm tapping my card, she said, oh, it don't work. I'm like, damn, ain't that taking money out of MARTA pocket? She's like, I'm getting a free ride, you know what I mean? I got trips on my car, but she's like, it don't work. That's a direct indication they gotta go. Now, I don't know how recent this has taken place, but some of the routes on the bus have changed to where I'm used to a bus going, let's say, to one point to another, turn right back around and come to the next point. Let's say Decatur, the 19 is one of the buses. Yesterday, I was on the, I was on the 111. The 111 and the 19, the 19 out of Decatur Station, the 111 out of Indian Creek Station. I've rode those routes for years. At some point, I'm not sure what happened, it wouldn't be a station to a station or, let's say, a ride stop to the station, like, just, you know, station, like, a ride stop station. Those two particular buses I just mentioned, now, the 19 would leave Shambly and come to Decatur Station and then go to Eastlake Station. I've never, I've never experienced that personally. And it threw me off because I'm thinking it goes, like I said, to Shambly Station, back to Decatur. All of a sudden, it leaves Shambly, come to Decatur and go to Eastlake. It almost seemed like it needed to be an extra route numbered or whatever, just for that whole thing about Decatur to Eastlake. I got caught up, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, either the drivers can inform the customers when they come on, hey, you going to, you going to Eastlake Station? Because I'm going to Shambly. You going to Shambly Station? Because I'm going to Eastlake. Same thing with the 111 yesterday. You know, I went to Home Depot. I know the 111, boom, dropped at Home Depot. So, I get on the bus coming back to, well, I thought coming back to Indian Creek. Turns out, I'm not sure what that route is, because I didn't know it existed. And I ended up getting on the bus, 111, the bus, I know the catch, but it's not taking me back to Indian Creek. I'm like, scratching my head, like, you know? So, that is confusing. It's a disservice to the customer. And when I got on the bus, I don't mind drivers, you know, when they gotta sit, I don't know, 10, 15, 30 minutes, you know, on the phone, playing music, and, you know, I don't mind that. But I don't know if it's a training issue or just the issue where the driver's just not really into talking to the customers. But it could be something as simple as that, as far as that matters. It could be something as simple as, hey, I'm not going, where you going? Before you tap, you know, where you going? Because, I mean, this is one of those split routes, is what I call a split route. You know, maybe that could help, or maybe, just like I say, a couple of extra different, some new routes. You know, maybe you just come up with a new route and that, I think that pretty much could solve that issue. But most importantly, those old boxes gotta go.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on to our agenda, the first item is the approval of the minutes from the November 9th, 2023 Board Meeting. It is in your packet. I will entertain a motion for approval of those minutes. It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please vote. The minutes have been adopted. Next, we'll move on to some resolutions that we have before us as the full board. First item is a resolution authorizing the placement of insurance policies for the Five Points Transformation Project. Donna Jennings, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman Worthy, Mr. Greenwood, and members of the board. I'm here today to request authorization to place two insurance policies to support the Five Points Station Transformation Project. Next slide, please. Purpose of my presentation is to outline why we are providing this coverage, to briefly define the two types of coverage, and to outline the total cost for the coverage. Next slide, please. So, why are we providing this coverage? During the development of the insurance requirements for the contract, staff determined that due to the significant project footprint located in downtown Atlanta and the project cost of $210 million, that it would be in the authority's best interest to provide two types of project-specific coverage, builder's risk and a general liability owner-controlled insurance program. We're coming to the board now as the project design and costs were recently agreed to by all parties. Per the Capital Programs Group, the anticipated construction start date of March 1, 2024 is contingent upon FTA approval of the submitted environmental documentation. In order to move forward on that date, we need approval now from the board to proceed with purchasing the insurance policies. As the project owner, there are a number of benefits we realize by providing this coverage for the general contract and all tiers of subcontractors that include the following. Being the named insured on this policy insulates our operating liability self-insured retention of $10 million and our coverage tower of $150 million from complex project risk. It also prevents disputes among the owner, contractors, and insurance companies in the event of a claim, as there is a single policy that will respond. And importantly, it allows for broader participation by DBE firms by eliminating the need for smaller firms to provide significant liability insurance coverage on their own. Next slide, please. Now, let's talk about what these policies cover. Importantly, both, excuse me, policies are project-specific, which means that the coverage is only for this project, so no other project cannot exhaust the policy limits. First, builder's risk coverage protects the authority's property and, while on-site, the contractor's materials, equipment, and other property during the course of construction. The policy provides coverage on an all-risk basis with varying levels of deductibles and limits of $210 million. The policy term is three years, February 1, 2024 to 2027, and the not-to-exceed cost is $893,000. Second, the general liability OSIP policy provides primary and excess liability coverage for the job site risks of MARTA as the owner, the general contractor, and subcontractors of all tiers. The policy has a $50,000 deductible and limits of $150 million. The policy term is three years and the not-to-exceed cost is $3,756,000. Next slide, please. And finally, the total cost for the insurance programs provided by the authority is $4,650,133 and is funded by 100% local capital funds from the project budget. I respectfully request your approval of this resolution. Next slide. Thank you.
I will entertain a motion for Resolution 2A. It has been moved and seconded. Any questions for Ms. Jennings? Mr. Pond?
Question. OSIP's definitely a great approach to this project. My question is, in the event of a claim, liability claim, what is this deductible?
$50,000.
How much?
$50,000.
$50,000. And does that go back to the contractor? But does that go into the project cost or the contractor bears that only though?
There is some chargeback that goes with that, but I'd have to go back and look at the contract specifically to tell you how much, but it's a much smaller deductible than our $10 million self-insured retention, so.
Right. But the contractor bears that?
They'll bear some of the cost, yes, sir.
Some, or some of the deductible, all of it?
I would need to go back and check the contract specifically to see the chargeback, but most of it would probably be borne by.
I think this is, I support this. I'm just curious how that deductible plays back to the cost of the project.
Yeah, I would have to look to be sure.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, I'm reading it here in the scope of the business purpose. It says it allows for broader participation by DBE firms by eliminating the hurdles for having to provide significant general liability limits on their own. Can you explain to me what does that look like? What does that?
Yes, sir. Typically, MARTA has a contractual risk transfer program, so we look at every single contract that comes through the authority and part of our job is to make sure that we, anybody that does work for us has an appropriate insurance program in place as a business to make sure that if we have a loss, we can go back to them and recover for anything that might have resulted from their negligence. So, in this event, a lot of times, the smaller contractors don't have access to, say, $50 million in liability insurance coverage in order to participate on a project. So, we make it easier for them to participate because we provide the coverage for everybody and we have contract certainty and coverage certainty that we have sufficient coverage for this project for everybody that does work on it for us.
Thank you. That's excellent.
Certainly.
Any other questions of Ms. Jennings? All right, please vote. The resolution is adopted. Next item on the agenda, Item 2A is a resolution authorizing the disposal of a non-exclusive permanent easement to the Georgia Department of Transportation for G DOT Parcel 6A along SR 29 Lee Street at the intersection of Lee Street and Sylvan Road. Ms. Boyd, welcome.
Good morning, Chair Worthy, GM Greenwood, members of the board. Could you go to the next slide, please? So, these have been several times for G DOT. They've, I think this might be the fourth or fifth request, and again, it is for a non-exclusive permanent easement, and this is along Lee Street where it intersects with Sylvan Road. And the, it's about 431 square feet. The value is $5,600, and there is federal interest, so we will have FTA concurrence. And if you could go to the next slide? And this is just an aerial view of where this is located. It's just south of the West End Station. And the next slide? And this is just showing the plan. It was just about 430.61 square feet. And the next slide? Again, a resolution authorizing the disposal of a non-exclusive permanent easement for the Georgia Department of Transportation, G DOT, for G DOT Parcel 6A along SR 29 Lee Street at the intersection of Lee Street and Sylvan Road.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. I'll entertain a motion in a second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, please vote. The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Item 2C is a resolution authorizing the solicitation of final design services for the Clayton County South Lake BRT alignment and airport connectivity AE 50443. Mr. Prescott, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Worthy, Mr. Greenwood, board members, gallery. Here today to ask for authorization for solicitation of the designs, final design services for the BRT of Clayton County Alignment as well as airport connectivity AE 50443. Next slide, please. So, the South Lake Rapid, that name is still in process as part of the branding program right now. It's a Bus Rapid Transit BRT running around the west side of the airport. It's, parallels the existing local bus route 196. I'm sure you've seen this map before in the upper right-hand corner. The connectivity starts at College Park, the airport, Riverdale, Southern Regional, and all the way down to South Lake Mall. The gold in the map represents the current fully dedicated lanes. The blue is a transition area, is a semi-dedicated, and the magenta color is the mixed traffic areas where it's in traffic, not its own dedicated transit lanes. We transition down to the aerial map in the lower right-hand corner. It's a blow-up of the area around the airport. The white dash line is the current alternative, is on the Roosevelt Highway running around the west side, but the orange there on the right side is the current design study that we're looking at for direct connectivity in the airport. Now, this opportunity may help us increase our overall dedicated lane percentage from the current goal of 50 to 65% because of the Riverdale road usage may increase that ability. So, moving on down to the airport study that we're doing, as this program develops, we'll be back, the planning group will be back hopefully in the spring with an amended LPA as we review this program. So, next slide. So, today, we'd like to hire an architectural engineering firm for the final design on the BRT, the total BRT alignments. We're breaking it up into two segments. To make sense of it, segment one is south of I-285 all the way down to South Lake, utilizing the current LPA alignment that runs south and using 30% design, taking it to 100%. Segment two is north of 285. So, that's the area for option one. We want to break that up. Option one is the current LPA that runs around the Roosevelt Highway side from College Park down to the I-285 connector and then taking that from the 30% to 100%. But while we're at it, we're taking that concept study that we're doing, we're gonna take that 15% airport connection and take it at 100%. Now, with that amended LPA, we will need to do some more NEPA collaboration to make sure we're all in order, because we're dealing with FAA, FHWA, and our FTA. Total project cost right now is at $338 million and a projected possibly $380 with some of the alternative alignments, depend on the option. The intent here is to have that decision made on the options prior to selecting or contracting with these consultants so that we have a concise design directive for them when we get to that point later this mid-year. Office of Diversity and Inclusion will do a study of the industry out there and provide us with a DBE percentage during the solicitation process. So, next slide. With that, I'd like to request the authorization for the solicitation of final design services for the Clayton County South Lake BRT alignment and airport connectivity AE 50443.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. I'll entertain a motion in a second. It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? The resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Agenda item 2C, it's with Mr. Prescott again, sorry, 2D. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of track isolation integrity monitoring system, RFP P 50067. Mr. Prescott, turn it back over to you.
Thank you again. Thank you again. Again, this is proposals for a design-build services. This may sound familiar to you because I was here before you back in August presenting the same topic, but we're doing a corrective expansion of what was requested before from just design services into a design-build and implementation program, all-inclusive. So next slide, please. So as a refresher, this is all about stray current. What we want to do is make sure we do some proactive investigation so that we can take care of our infrastructure and as well as our system components out there. We're planning on building upon our current system, which is more static or manual-operated, and so it's more reactive than proactive. Going with the state-of-the-art system that we can connect into all of our components in the field gives us the opportunity to be a little bit more proactive and get ahead of the corrosion that's out there and protect our infrastructure. So this TMS is another acronym for you to learn. We're going to go out into the industry and get some subject magic experts from around the nation to help us specifically for this type of work. So next slide. Cost-wise, the design services are the $750K. The total system, which is a software system, and installation implementation is another $5 million with a total program of $8 million over the life of the contract. Utilizing the design builder coming onboard next year, we could advance the implementation of this program at starting at 60%, using the design-build process. Once that is up and running at the end of that program in the middle of '25, '26, we, Infrastructure, Facilities, Operations, will take over the overall installation throughout the entire alignment of the system in line with other programs that are out in the field. Again, DBE, the Design and Diversity and Inclusion will review the industry and provide us with a DBE goal during the solicitation process. Next slide. With that, I'd like to request this Resolution authorizing solicitation of proposals for design-build services for the track isolation integrity monitoring system, RFP 50067.
Hearing none, please vote. The resolution is agreed to. Next item on the agenda, Item Number 2E, Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the invitation for bid, FIB B50185 Brookhaven Oglethorpe Station flooring replacement. Mr. Leach.
Good afternoon, Chair Worthy, Mr. Greenwood, and board members. Today, I will bring you a formal request for a resolution authorizing an award of a contract for invitation for bid for the Brookhaven Station concourse flooring replacement. Next slide, please. To provide you with a good background of how we arrived at the request, I'll give you some details of where we got to this point. At the end of June, a formal bid conference was held in which no potential bidders attended. At the end of the formal bidding process, unfortunately, we received no bids. Our contracts procurement department did reach out to the firms that did pick up plans to pull them and ask them why they didn't feel they wanted to go after this project. The answers ranged from not having interest in the subcontracting market or work from primary contractors wanting to go after it, and they looked at smaller firms that picked up, and they came back and said that the documentation, the federal requirements were a bit overwhelming for them to try to go after. So following the standard contracts and procurement procedures, we were permitted to select a single vendor to negotiate with. At that time, in mid-August, we selected New South Synergy to negotiate with as they were currently contracted under the station rehabilitation program to perform the work on the platform upstairs under that program. So after some formal negotiation of the scope, the schedule, and the budget of this work downstairs, we reached an agreement, which is brought before you today. Next slide, please. So I wanted to provide a little bit of an idea of what we're proposing to do at the site so you understand what we're looking to do. What you see on the slide is some of the materials we're proposing. So within the plaza areas downstairs, we're proposing to use an exposed aggregate concrete surface that has been used thoroughly throughout the stations. You've seen them, they look like regular concrete, but they have some aggregate that is exposed. Within the patron underpass area, we're looking to use something of a milestone-grade quartz paver, which we're using throughout the station rehabilitation programs. We're starting to go more towards pavers because it's giving a new aesthetic to the station. It's also actually something that has a good durable life to it. It reduces the size of some of the grout lines, so it's actually easier to maintain. So they also have a better slip resistance than some of the surfaces that we've used in the past. Maintenance is easier, so overall, it'll help us throughout looking at the station. The station will look better, and it'll be easier to maintain and still have the long life that we've had in the past. Next slide, please. So the final negotiated contract value with New South Synergy is $3,180,485, which is under the independent cost estimate for proposed work at the station. One of the current FY '24 funding sources is a $1 million federal grant provided to us by Senator Macbeth. The remaining funds will come from local funds. As you can see on the estimated schedule, we're currently within the right end of the light green bar, which is the procurement, and if awarded, we will get started with the vendor right away because they're preparing to do the work upstairs on the platform. So we want to make the work work together so that when they do not have the ability to work on the platform, they can work downstairs so that the work will work continuously getting the station done concurrently. Next slide, please. Our Office of Diversity and Inclusion has set a DBE goal of 25%, and the vendor, New South Synergy, has committed to meet the goal, and they're looking for ways to possibly exceed it. So we're going to work with them through the project to go beyond the 25%. And so with that, the Capital Programs Delivery Team respectfully recommends the approval of a resolution authorizing the general manager or his delegate to enter into a contract for the procurement for the construction of Brookhaven Station concourse and underpass replacement, B50185, with New South Synergy a joint venture in the amount of $3,180,485. Next slide, please. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion in a second. It has been moved and seconded. Any questions for Mr. Leach? The resolution has been adopted. Agenda Item 2F is a Resolution authorizing final acceptance for contract CP 28941 Avondale Yard Gap Breaker EEX Equipment Replacement. Mr. Leach, it's you again.
Thank you, Chair Worthy. So over the next few months, I'll be following our government's requirements and be bringing to the board or the PCP committee a few projects that we've been working actively to close out over the last few years. This will be one of the three projects that I'll present to you today to give you the backstory of the job, what it delivered, and how we finally closed it out and your request to close it out. So this presentation will be a request of the authorization of final acceptance of the Avondale Yard Gap Breaker Station Equipment Replacement Project. Next slide, please. So this project's accomplishments has had the removal and replacement of existing traction power equipment at the Avondale Gap Breaker Station. The details of the work shown were to replace multiple electric parts that send power from our supplier, Georgia Power, into our rail system and to the trains themselves to move them throughout the system. Additional scope of work provided new and upgraded support equipment for the electrical system and support for the staff that maintain it. This equipment needed to be replaced due to its frequent maintenance issues and reliability concerns. The vendor provided a 34.71% DBE participation, far surpassing the assigned goal of 10%. Next slide, please. So I wanted to provide you a few photos of some of the equipment. A lot of it just looks like big gray boxes, but these are some of the power equipment controllers that we have for the DC switch gears and the breakers that help power our rails, rail cars. And on the right side, you see the photo of the gray box. That's actually a fiber optic box that actually has connectivity of this equipment to our communications for the new system so we can maintain and monitor it. Next slide, please. So the contract closeout information shows that the project team had a board authorization of $1.728 million with a quantity variance with a reduction of $368,000. The total contract value changes was $1,360,146.15, and the total paid out to the vendor was $1,358,786.15 for a paid percentage of 99.9%. Next slide, please. So with that, the Capital Program Delivery Team respectfully requests the approval of a resolution authorizing the final acceptance of contract CPB 28941 Avondale Yard Gap Breaker Station EEX Equipment Replacement. Thank you very much.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, please vote. The resolution has been adopted. Agenda Item 2G, Resolution authorizing final acceptance of contract CP 28939 Systemwide Uninterruptible Power Supply Replacement.
Thank you, Chair Worthy. So this presentation is a continuation of the projects that we're looking to close, specifically for the Systemwide Uninterruptible Power Supply Replacement Project. Next slide, please. So this project's accomplishment replaced the majority of MARTA's UPS systems at the transit stations, which have been in service for almost 35 years and was over the 20-year recommended service life. Multiple UPS units had been failing, with the remainder of units showing degradation, excuse me, and the performance requiring additional monitoring and maintenance by the staff. Additionally, the project replaced UPS systems at other locations that support MARTA's enterprise IT network. The replacement of the existing UPS systems ensures and regulates that the incoming AC power to critical life safety and operational systems. Furthermore, in the event of a total loss of incoming AC power, the UPS system's banks of storage battery supplies power to critical life systems and including emergency egress signage, interior station lighting, public address systems, and the fire alarm systems. The project also addressed UPS-related equipment and the infrastructure, including ventilation fans, air conditioning units, iWash stations, and the fire alarm system. The project also addressed UPS-related equipment and the infrastructure, including ventilation, excuse me, doors and signage and ventilation repairs throughout the station. The project was completed 18 months ahead of schedule, and the vendor had a DBE participation of 33.08%, which was higher than the 5% goal that was originally set. Next slide, please. So continuing, we're going to give you some examples, more big gray boxes essentially, but these are the cabinets that actually support as backup to power into the systems when the main power goes down. Next slide. And to give you an idea, the item on the left is a doorway. So again, some of the support infrastructure, they actually had to widen the door to get a lot of the equipment into the rooms, so that's a new door. And on the right, that's actually a battery rack. So these are racks and racks of batteries that have to be tested and upgraded and replaced as needed, but again, it's the electrical system that supports everything that's within the station to keep it operational. Next slide, please. The contract closeout information, the project team had a board authorization of $21.6 million with nine change orders reducing the authorization by $251,000 and a quantity variance reduction of $185,000. The total contract value after changes was $21,188,720.99. The total paid out to the vendor was $21,183,720.99 for a paid percentage of 99.98%. Next slide, please. And with that, the Capital Programs Delivery Team respectfully requests the approval of Resolution authorizing the final acceptance of contract CPB 28939 Systemwide Uninterruptible Power Supply Replacement. Thank you.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions for Mr. Leach? Mr. Duritt?
I should have said this for the first one you presented. Congratulations, these are great reports.
Lots of people, and before me and her here, helped finish these.
Any other questions? We need one more vote. Who am I missing? Okay, now we have it. All right, resolution passed. Okay, Agenda Item 2H, Resolution authorizing final acceptance of contract CPB 12225 Furnishing and Installing AC track circuit upgrade and train alert lights.
Thank you, Chair Worthy. So for the last and final one for this month, I'll presenting the request for authorization of final acceptance for the AC track circuit upgrade and train alert lighting project. Next slide, please. So this project's main accomplishments include replacing older audio frequency or AF track circuits with alternating curting or AC track circuits as well as associated loops at 15 critical MARTA interlocking locations to provide a more reliable and safe system for the MARTA patrons and for the employees. The additional scope was to add train alert lights at 10 MARTA locations to offer a greater warning of oncoming trains where the site distance is less than 750 feet. So this is for on-track. The train alert lights enhance the safety of the MARTA personnel and contractors working on the trackway by providing a visual warning system of approaching trains approximately 90 seconds prior to arrival. So you'll be able to see in multiple locations, they were deployed in a graphic that will be coming up in the next slide, in this slide, and as a summary of the DBE participation in the project, the vendor provided a 9.91% DBE participation, which the goal was 10%. So we just came slightly under the requested goal. Next slide, please. So to give you a little idea of what these circuits are, they're hard to see when you're riding the train, but as you can see in the graphic on the right-hand side, there looks like a pipe in the middle of the track, and there are some sensors that are actually screwed to the side of the tracks. These are some of the track circuit connections that when the train passes through, it actually recognizes that the train is passing that point. So for anybody that grew up with an HO train set, essentially, it's kind of when the train passes over the power supply and it recognizes the train in there into another block. Next slide, please. This slide, again, this is a tough one to see. On the lower right graphic or the upper-left graphic, you can see the red line. There's a little white sensor that's there. That's actually a speed sensor. So as the train passes over it, it's actually sensing the speed of the train that goes back to the train control center so we know how fast the trains are moving through the system. So these are pieces that were replaced. Next slide, please. The next couple of slides will give you an idea that I think everybody's seen these when you're driving on 400 at night and you see the yellow lights start to blink. These are the yellow lights that were actually installed a couple of years ago. This is on the 400 line. Next slide, please. And this particular one is on the AB Bridge over the I-85 interchange, looking north. Again, this is really visual for anybody working on the track, whether it's our track walkers or any contractors of the approaching train before they can hear it because it is silent and then all of a sudden, it's there. Next slide, please. So the contract closeout information shows that the project team had a board authorization of $12.189 million with a quantity variance reduction of $596,000. The total contract value after changes was $11,593,280.57, and the total paid out to the vendor was $11,588,280.57 for the percentage of 99.96%. Next slide, please. So with that, the Capital Programs Delivery Team respectfully requests the approval of a Resolution authorizing the final acceptance of contract CPB 12225 Furnishing and Installing AC track circuits upgrade and train alert lights, Phase 2 project. Thank you very much.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, please vote. Resolution passes. Moving on, next item on the agenda, moving on to the consent agenda, we'll hear a committee report. First is Business Management Committee, Mr. Duritt.
Mr. Chairman, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, November 16, 2023, and approved the following resolutions. A, Resolution authorizing renewal of the authority's excess operating property and liability insurance coverage for calendar year 2024. B, Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the license subscriptions and support for VMware v Realized Products and Services IFBB 50331. C, Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of application-centric infrastructure leaf expansions with licenses IFBB 50261. D, Resolution authorizing a modification and contractual authorization for multifunctional printers, lease, and maintenance services B50184. E, Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for CCTV offline camera remediation IFBB 50298. And F, a Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the replacement of the existing public-facing website platform RFP P50441. I request approval of these resolutions.
Mr. Duritt has moved approval of those resolutions, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Please vote. The resolutions have been adopted.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Duritt. The Operations and Safety Committee, Chairman Pond.
Mr. Chairman, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, November 16, 2023, and approved the following resolutions. A, Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for portable mobile bus lifts IFBB 50325. B, Resolution authorizing the award of a contract. geometric with testing for MARTA rails, the MARTA rail system IFBB 50237. Geometricated Testing for MARTA Rails, the MARTA Rail System, IFBB50237. I request approval of these resolutions.
Chairman Pond has moved approval for these. Concludes my For the Committee, Chair Hardage.
Mr. Chairman, the External Relations Committee met on Thursday, November 16, 2023, and received the following briefings. MARTA 2024 Legislative Agenda. ARTBOUND 2023 Update. Media Impressions, July through October 2023. And Take MARTA to the Airport Marketing Campaign. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Hardage. Audit Committee, Chair Frierson.
Mr. Chair, the Audit Committee met on Friday, November 17, 2023, and received the following briefings. MARTA Annual External Financial Audit for FY23. Internal Audit Activity, Q1 FY24. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Frierson. Next item on the agenda is a resolution of the MARTA Board of Directors appointing a member of the Board of Fulton Technology and Energy Enhancement Authority. Counsel, do I need to read this resolution into the?
No, sir. It was advertised and published to the public.
This is an appointment by our Board. It was historically held by Raj, and now that Raj has left the authority, the Board is appointing Kevin Hurley, the Acting CFO, to this authority. May I have a motion in a second? Any discussion? The appointment has passed. Next item on the agenda is approval for Board Officers for 2024. Mr. Durritt of the Nominating Committee, will you please read your report?
The Nominating Committee, besides yours, truly included Frida Hardage, Valencia Williamson, and Jacob Sagacabi. I'm pleased to report that each of us boarded the MARTA Festivus. Our vote was unanimous, so we share with you this officer slate. We think that it's great. I know that it's late. I'm finally through. For 2024, we recommend the following as a motion to this Board. For Chair, Katie Powers of Clayton County. For Vice Chair, Jennifer Ide of the City of Atlanta. For Secretary, Al Pond of Fulton County. For Treasurer, Rod Frierson of DeKalb County. And for immediate past Chair, let's see, oh, oh, it's you, Thomas Worthy, the Governor's Appointee.
Thank you, Chair Durritt. I do want to read a message that Chair Powers, or Katie Powers, asked me to read to all of you. Colleagues, I'm deeply grateful for and honored by this nomination, and I ask that you please not mistake my absence today for not appreciating the honor of the role and the gravity of its responsibilities. I noticed, I notified Tyreen and Chairman Worthy two months ago of my inability to be here today due to an immovable conflict, but I promise you that doesn't reflect on my commitment to the position of Chairman. Should you elect me as a lifelong resident of Clayton County, I love the opportunity that MARTA offers the place my family and I call home, and I'm dedicated to diligently working toward that progress. I'm also thrilled and humbled by the fact that I will be the first MARTA Chair from Clayton County. Not only do I believe that this is deeply important for my home, I also believe that this is important for all MARTA jurisdictions because its geographic diversity makes us stronger, it makes us as an authority stronger and better. I commit to all of you that I will be a listener, a learner, and a doer. I hope that you will come to trust my judgment, but I promise you from January 1, you will trust my work ethic and dedication. So due to our absence, I wanted to make sure that is read. Chair Durritt has moved. Is there any objection to the slate of officers? If there is no objection, we can vote on it as a slate. It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? The slate of officers has been adopted. Next item on the agenda is approval of the proposed 2024 schedule of Board and Standing Committee Meetings. You will see that in the back of your packet. It looks the same as it did this year with the days and times during the months, so there's not much discussion on that. I will, I will move acceptance of the proposed 2024 calendar. And can I get a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. The calendar has been adopted. Thank you very much. Moving on to other matters, we have, I believe, three matters from executive session or four matters?
We've got a couple. We have two real estate resolutions and three settlements.
Okay.
I'm going to go with the long ones first, which are the two resolutions for the real estate, if that's okay with you.
Read fast.
Yes, sir. Resolution authorizing the acceptance of an administrative settlement to complete acquisition of 5265 Old Dixie Road, MARTA Parcel B097B, City of Forest Park, Clayton County, Georgia, for the Clayton County multipurpose operations and maintenance facility. Whereas the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority's operations staff has identified the public need to acquire certain real property within the City of Forest Park, Clayton County, State of Georgia, to expand MARTA's rapid transit system for multipurpose operations and maintenance facility that is to be located within MARTA's jurisdictional service area. And whereas the need for the facility was recognized when Clayton County citizens voted to join the MARTA system in November 2014, and whereas the facility will supplement other existing MARTA bus maintenance facilities in Fulton and DeKalb Counties, leverage new vehicle technology such as electric bus and connected autonomous vehicles, and add needed infrastructure to improve current MARTA bus systems operations. And whereas MARTA identified certain real property improvements located at 5265 Old Dixie Road, Forest Park, Georgia, to be acquired for the facility site, and whereas MARTA and the City of Forest Park executed a memorandum of understanding on July 27, 2020, whereby the city agreed to coordinate efforts regarding the expansion of MARTA's rapid transit system within the city limits. And whereas MARTA and the City of Forest Park, after obtaining an independent real estate appraisal of the property, submitted joint offers to the owner of the property. Whereas the City of Forest Park filed condemnation documents and deposited $30 million with the court on June 28, 2022. And whereas Mascot LLC, Monstan Limited Partnership, and Scott Castle Associates, collectively as kin properties, and MARTA have reached an agreement for administrative settlement in the amount of $33 million to cover all ownership rights, including relocation and reestablishment entitlements. The FTA has concurred with the administrative settlement. Be it resolved therefore that the general manager, CEO, or his delegate is hereby authorized to execute settlement agreement and mutual release to complete the fee simple acquisition of the real property and all improvements and fixtures located thereon, located at 5265 Old Dixie Road, City of Forest Park, Clayton County, Georgia, State of Georgia, in the amount of $33 million and such other ancillary documents and agreements necessary to facilitate the acquisition of the property.
I move approval.
Moved by Durritt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Hardage. Any discussion? Hearing none. This will be a hand vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Next item, Mr. Andrews.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of administrative settlement to complete acquisition of Zero Ridge Avenue Southwest, MARTA Parcel B128, City of Atlanta, Fulton, Georgia, for the, excuse me, Fulton County, Georgia, for the MARTA Rapid Summer Hill Project. Whereas pursuant to the MARTA Act of 1965 as amended, the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority exists for purposes of planning, designing, leasing, purchasing, acquiring, holding, owning, constructing, improving, equipping, financing, maintaining, administering a rapid transit system within the multiple metropolitan area, and operating same. Whereas MARTA's operations staff has identified a public need to acquire property within the City of Atlanta, Fulton County, Georgia, and the city is within the territorial jurisdiction of MARTA. Whereas MARTA will expand its rapid transit system by developing, maintaining, and operating a bus rapid transit project, the MARTA Rapid Summer Hill Project, located within the city. Whereas MARTA Planning and Capital Programs identified certain real property allocated along the MARTA Rapid Summer Hill Project corridor within the City of Atlanta, Fulton County, State of Georgia, for acquisition to facilitate the MARTA Rapid Summer Hill Project. Whereas MARTA and the city executed a rapid transit contract and assistance agreement and more MARTA intergovernmental agreement and Summer Hill BRT project-based agreement, collectively the agreements. Whereas collectively, the parties agreed under the agreements to coordinate their efforts regarding the expansion of MARTA's rapid transit system, including without limitation, the city agreeing to work with MARTA and upon the requisite, on the request of MARTA, to exercise its eminent domain power to acquire any property rights and interest necessary for MARTA to carry out its purposes stated in the MARTA Act for the MARTA Rapid Summer Hill Project. Whereas MARTA and the City of Atlanta, after obtaining an independent real estate appraisal of the property, submitted a joint offer to the owner of the property and failing to reach a mutual agreement regarding the acquisition of the property. Whereas the city filed condemnation documents to take possession on May 1, 2023, and MARTA deposited $545,000 with the court on May 4, 2023. MARTA's updated appraisal to the date of taking condemnation was $565,300. And whereas the parties agreed to mediate their dispute regarding the value of the property. Whereas on November 14, 2023, the parties reached mutual agreement to settle the dispute, which the owner has agreed that the settlement remains subject to concurrence by the MARTA Board of Directors and FTA, which has been requested by MARTA. Be it resolved therefore, MDQ Construction, Inc., and MARTA have reached agreement for administrative settlement in the amount of $710,000 to cover all ownership rights. Additionally, MARTA has agreed to the owner's portion of the mediator's time on November 14, 2023. Be it further resolved therefore that the general manager, CEO, or his delegate is hereby authorized to execute settlement agreement to complete the fee simple acquisition of the real property located at Zero Ridge Avenue, City of Atlanta, Fulton County, State of Georgia, in the amount of $710,000 and $2,750 for the cost of the mediator's time incurred on November 14, plus such other ancillary documents and agreements necessary to facilitate the acquisition of the property.
Move approval.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Thank God we don't pay you by the word. Any discussion? Hearing none. This will be a hand vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is adopted. Next item, Mr. Andrews.
Yes, I would like a motion to approve the settlement in the amount of $225,000 in the workers' comp claim of Leteria Jackson.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please vote by raising your hand in the, all in favor. Unanimous. Mr. Andrews.
Another motion to approve a settlement in the amount of $369,704 in the workers' comp claim of Kathy Hunt.
Move approval.
It's been moved by Durritt, seconded by Williamson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. It is adopted.
And finally, I would request a motion to approve a settlement in the amount of $500,000 in the Gerald Johnson v. MARTA lawsuit.
Move approval.
Moved by Durritt, seconded by Hardage. Any discussion? All in favor, please vote. It has been adopted. The last items on the agenda is comment, other matters and comments from the Board. If you indulge me, I would like to express my appreciation to all of you and the MARTA staff. This will be my last meeting as Chair. It has been a distinctly high honor to serve as Chair, and I appreciate the confidence that you all put in me. I hope I made you proud. I look forward to joining you on that side of the dais in January. But thank you, thank you, colleague, and thank you to all MARTA staff. And with that, if there's any other comments, Mr. Durritt?
Yeah, I want to express on behalf of the entire Board, those that are present, those that are not, our appreciation for the leadership that you have shown. And I'd also like to express appreciation to Rita Scott for her leadership as Chair-Elect.
Katie Powers.
Former.
Immediate past Chair.
Immediate past Chair, sorry.
When you said elect, I got.
Yeah.
Mr. Pond.
Well, you're the lawyer. You caught me. Good.
Mr. Pond.
Jim stole my words, but I'll just kind of summarize it a different way. As they say in South, South Georgia, you done good this year.
Well, thank you very much. Having no other items to come before the Board, we will stand adjourned at 2:28 PM. Thank you very much.